Nicole? I did. Nicole?
Okay, Don, can you hear us now?
Yes, before we start, we'll probably have to change the council chambers from information technology.
Oh, he's on it. Thank you.
Good evening. We welcome you here at the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We note that we have a quorum participating, both here and electronically. We excused Councilman Fitissimano and Councilman Nordfeldt, who will not be attending tonight. I believe Councilman Hune will join us shortly. But regardless of that, we do have four. That's a quorum. And the public can, of course, and some do, have come here to join us in the council chambers. Others will be joining, listening in electronically. With that, we'll begin with our Inside the City video.
Thirty-three years. It's been good, though. We've had a great marriage. We still do. So, thanks for saving me. And we were watching our neighbor's cat, Lila, and she's kind of sometimes fussy. So I was making a bed for Lila.
Hear this big thump, and it's like, Cindy? No response, of course, you know. And, you know, I get up, flip on the light, and she piled up in the doorway of her bedroom. And, you know, basically, just thought she had just banged her head, knocked herself out type thing. And so I'm kind of yelling, trying to get her attention, maybe bring her out of it or whatever, and recognize that she's not breathing and just kind of gasping type thing.
There's great, great pauses between that. You hear that?
Yeah, I do. I do.
And so called 911, started the CPR.
Cindy, she's not breathing.
Okay, we need to start CPR, sir. Is she on her back right now?
Yeah, she's on her side.
Okay, she's still on the... Okay, put her onto her back right now. I'm gonna help you do...
She just took a breath.
Okay, well, if there's any doubt, we need to do CPR, sir.
I hear you. She's just turning white.
Okay. Okay, I'm getting... I do have helpers in route. I'm gonna do CPR with you. I'm gonna count with you, okay? All right, so get her flat on her back, on her heart. Okay. And I want you to put the heel of your hand on the center of her chest, a little bit above where the abdomen starts, okay? And then put your other hand on top of that hand, okay?
Yep.
Okay, pump down the... Pump two inches deep, hard and fast, and I'm gonna count with you, okay? Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. Try to pump about twice every second. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four.
Stop breathing.
Okay. One, two, three, four.
I mean, it was just, it was just really, I guess breathtaking in a sense when she started breathing on her own again. And it was just really cool, you know? I mean, you never know what the outcome's gonna be at that point in time, but I mean, that's a very positive thing. I have had training through Boy Scouts on a couple of occasions. Obviously, never had to, you know, actually, you know, bring anybody back. I'm glad it was her, and I'm glad she's, you know, everything went very well. But, you know, it's just one of those things that a little bit of training for this kind of routine is just... It's imperative. People should recognize the need for that. It's just, you know, I had visions, you know? They say it's not uncommon to break a rib because you pushed too hard or whatever. I mean, you feel the rib cage collapsing, you know, into the chest. But again, that's what you have to do. You have to get past that rib cage to put the pressure on the heart. To the world, you may be one person, but to one person, you may be the world. And she is my world. And I'm glad she's still here. Just educate yourself. If you have any opportunity, you know, take advantage of it because, you know, you just never know. I mean, Cindy's given five or six kids at her school the Heimlich maneuver just because, you know, it happens. And so, you know, I've never had to give Heimlich, but okay, yeah, I've done CPR now. But it's not rocket science. Anybody can do it. But just keep your wits about. You don't go into panic mode. And just if you, if you had some training at all, just react in the appropriate way, and you can have a good outcome.
Thank you. Special stories like that, that you realize some of the critical things that happen in the city. Next, we go to our approval of the minutes of July 6th.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as they are. Then without objection, the minutes will be approved. And hearing no objection, then the minutes are approved unanimously. Next on our agenda, we have a proclamation encouraging West Valley City residents to learn about and use the city's trail system. And...
I was gonna read that, Mayor. I don't know if we want to have some of the youth city council speak to that at this time, or...
Do you want to do that?
I think we have some here.
So, before or after you read it?
I think before.
Okay. So who's that going to be, Mr. Pyle?
Clover, you want to come and introduce as well? That'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Clover Meters. I'm the Youth City Council advisor. So I'll just have our Youth City Council mayor give a little introduction about the proclamation we've worked on this year.
Hi, everyone. My name's Amina Ahmed. I'm the Youth City Council mayor. A lot of the intention behind this proclamation started just because there was a whole year of a pandemic. The trails are out. They're various in our cities, but they're not really being used. It's kind of simple and to the point. You want them to be used. You want the city citizens to be encouraged to use them. Not only just to use them, but also maintain them and respect the environment, you know, keeping them clean, walking the dogs track the on, and just like basic maintaining the environment type of things like that. So the intention behind it beyond that would be to sort of publicize it in a way, just to be like, oh, there's a proclamation. There's a day or month behind it. So you might be more inclined to actually use the trails. So plain and simple, that's what it is, and we hope you consider it seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilman Buehler?
A proclamation encouraging West Valley City residents to learn about and use the city's trail system. Whereas outdoor activity has numerous benefits for public health and personal well-being, including increased vitamin D levels, physical activity, mental clarity, and mood enhancement. And whereas West Valley City has over 27 miles of well-kept, publicly accessible, and free-to-use trails. And whereas increased use of the trails will benefit both the city and the public by supporting public health and recognition and support of our trail system. And whereas the city officials could do their part to promote the education of use of and care for our trail system, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of West Valley City, Utah, that the City Council declares the month of July to be use of, use the trails months.
Okay, thank you. You know, this, we commend the youth council and certainly staff for bringing this forward. Certainly, we want to create a healthy city as well as an enjoyable city. Quality of life trails bring a lot to our city. So... Thank you very much. If there are no more comments from the council members, then we'll go to our public comment period. If you are here to speak to one of the issues on our agenda, you will note that there are three public hearings. If you're speaking to those, wait, because we'll open it for speaking at that point. This part of the agenda is for other items, anything other than those three items. So with that, then, we'll... Let's see. Do we have anyone online, Nicole?
We did have someone sign up. It does not look like they're joined.
Okay. We'll check once more after we hear from those who are here in the chamber. We'll begin with Jim Beesock.
Good evening, mayor and council. Last week was kind of an exciting event going on here. But one of the things that I got out of it, and I brought it up about a month ago, is the 55-year-old for discount at the rec center. I can go to Taco Bell and get a discount. Most restaurants at 55, you can get a discount. But at the rec center, you've got to be 62, I believe it is, to get the discount. If housing that we're all putting in is 55, the feds say it's 55. We had a passionate council person about federal law. Why can't we get the rec center down to 55? KOPFC and Kerns, theirs is 55. It seems it would be a simple fix. The music in the study meeting, people were talking about the music. I've called many times. I have a neighbor that likes playing mariachi music. Usually by the time I call, the ones that are closer to him have already called. The police come out, he turns it down, but he's never been cited. And then, not like what's happening in the meeting where it comes on right away. Sometimes it does. But there was one time where they actually had three officers, because somehow it got put on there. He had been called so many times by so many neighbors that it became a nuisance house. When that happens, they respond in force. And, I mean, I don't want to see that either, but hopefully you guys are gonna move that over and look at it about raising the fine. Maybe not the first time, but if they have to come out two and three times, besides the cost of the officer, you know, and the time of the officer coming out, taking them off of the streets, you know, it's time to hit them with a big fine, like 500 bucks or something. I know Mr. Pyle's looking into it, and I appreciate that. So that's all I have tonight. Stay safe, stay strong.
Thank you. Next, if I'm reading this correctly, maybe it's Mark Anders? And you can correct that once you come up to the microphone if I didn't get...
That's poor handwriting, sir. It's Anderson. I just wanted to comment on the rezoning on Redwood Road. Is this the appropriate time?
On 2351 South Redwood Road?
Yes, sir.
No, if you'll wait just a moment, we'll do another... By state law, we have to have certain public hearings, and so we'll have you do that in just a few minutes. Sir, anyone else here who was wanting to speak on an issue? Nicole, did we ever have that individual come back on the line electronically?
No, sir.
Nope? Okay. Then we'll close our public comment period. To our city manager, any comments this evening?
Yeah, Mayor, just one of note, I thought was worth mentioning this week. So you, as you realize, we've been more and more involved in wildfire fighting over the last few years, not just here within our own city or state, but also across the country. And in some of those needs, we have modified and obtained equipment that has helped with that. Of particular note, I wanted to mention a cooperative effort between the fire department and our fleet department, where we took two of our existing brush trucks and upgraded them to a higher level, what's called a Type 6 Wildland firefighting rig, which in a normal situation, buying and purchasing new is like a $300,000 purchase, which we did, upfitting these existing trucks for $30,000 for the both of them, and acquired the same capability, which I thought was just another good example of what our guys are capable of doing and interdepartmental relations and working together. So just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Council members? I would just say that, Mr. Pyle, that's also a good example of the attitude of our city staff as well, the willingness to step forward and to be conscious of the cost of doing things where possible. It's not always possible to reduce costs. Some things you have to pay for regardless. But that's a great example, and thank you. Then with that, we'll go to our first public hearing. Our first public hearing is GPZ-92021, filed by Russell Platt for property located at 2351 South Redwood Road. After we have talked about it for a few moments, we will consider three actions. A general plan change, which would be ordinance 21-43. A zoning change, 21-44. And a development agreement, 21-112. This property was previously... No, this one is a new one there. This property butts right onto Redwood Road. They're going to put in some, I guess they're townhomes there. Let's see. 24 units. They're two to three stories, about 13 units per acre. They'll have two-car garage, and 14 of them will have a driveway that will also accommodate a couple of additional vehicles. So they're ranging from about over 1,700 square feet to over 2,100 square feet. And I got all the zeros in the right place. Last week I didn't. We were going to approve a, what was it, a 250,000-square-foot apartment, so, townhome. But I got it right this time. With that introduction, then, what we will now do, unless council members want to add any comments to that, then we will open the public comment period on this issue. And so, Mark, I believe that this is the one you wanted to speak to?
Thank you. I have very little information on this, but I have a couple of concerns. My principal one is traffic mitigation in that area. I represent the property directly across the street. And it is virtually impossible at times to exit as is. I just wonder what this will do to the traffic flow there, and if what's been done to mitigate that, or if they're willing to put a sign on, or a stop, a semaphore at Alexander. And then the other concern I think I have is that it's currently zoned commercial, which I think is a good tax advantage for the city versus to put more homes there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak to this issue?
Yes, hi, I'm John Lee. I'm the founder of Dot Architecture. I'm here instead of Russell Platt. He unfortunately had a severe accident and is no longer able to take on this project. So I've kind of come in to help kind of bring the project to its conclusion. What I wanted to ask, we've been looking at the development agreement, and currently the project isn't meeting a lot of the standards in the development agreement. So we would request that we table the project with you guys until we can resubmit to the staff on July 28th. Get it on your study meeting by the 3rd of August, and then get the final approval around the 10th. And that would give us the time to update the plans and make sure that they all meet your standards of the development agreement before you guys make a decision.
Okay. Now, Mr. Pyle, what about the timing on that?
So if we pick a date certain, that's one way to go, and that's fine. We can also continue it out to a date not certain. It'd probably be preferable if you had a defined time period.
Okay. There's not a point there where they have to go back to the start and start again?
We were looking into that earlier. What did we find out on that, Nicole?
So if it's continued to a date certain, we would not have to renotice the application. If we do like an indefinite continual, we wouldn't have to, or we would have to renotice the application.
Okay, and then also let me ask Mr. Pastrick, is there any sort of timeline on the application itself?
No, sir. We can either do a no date certain or a specific date. Either one's fine.
Okay, so either the no date certain or specific date option would work as well for the application.
Okay. But he's in, the representative of this project has indicated a specific timeframe. And will that work on our agendas?
Sorry, I was just talking to Nicole. What was that, Mayor?
To go to the 28th, I believe, of July?
If that works for you and the applicant, that'll work. The only other reminder I'd add is we don't have a meeting on August 3rd for other reasons, so keep that in mind.
I mean, we're flexible. I just wanted to make the request, because we kind of just picked the project up, and are trying to get familiar and make the changes that will make it a successful project, so.
Okay.
And as I heard you speak, and it sounded like your proposal or your request would be to put it again on the study meeting and then on the regular meeting agenda, did I...
That was staff's recommendation. If there's another way you'd like to do it, I'm happy to do it that way.
So if we were on the study meeting, July 28th, it would be in this meeting? We have a meeting on August 10th, which is election day?
We do.
Right?
Yes.
Sorry, it was to submit to staff on the 28th?
Okay.
And then get on your next agenda?
So it would be on, it would be on an August study meeting agenda, and then a regular meeting agenda?
And we are having a meeting on the 10th?
Yes. Unless you guys want to change. We can do that, too.
Traditionally, don't, but we have...
I paused because in times past, we have...
The budget.
Oh, the budget.
Although, is the budget on the 10th or is it on the 17th? It is on the 10th. Yeah, so that's the reason why.
Traditionally, we've canceled the general election in November, but not the primary election.
Not primaries, okay.
We would be okay with a following meeting, too, if that's easier for everyone.
So I'm good with making a motion. My only question is, Nicole, can we do all three together? Just the, okay, each one? So on ordinance 21-43, to postpone it until August 10th for the study session and bring it back to a public hearing on the 17th of August?
Second.
Point of order, Mayor. I'm in favor of the motion, but should we finish the public hearing first?
That's what I thought halfway through the motion.
Is there anyone else to speak to this issue? Hearing none. Then we'll close the public comment portion and bring it back to the council. It's fine, we were interacting, and... So now, Councilman Lang, Councilwoman Lang?
Well, it's one of those I have to have both open. So on ordinance 21-43, move for a continuance to bring it back to public hearing on August 17th?
Second.
Properly before us. Any further comments? Hearing none. Then to our city recorder.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously for continuance.
Thank you. Whoever's next for the other two items, one of them?
Move for a continuance of ordinance 21-44 to be brought back with the ordinance 21-43.
Second.
Second.
Properly before us. Any further comments? Hearing unseen none. To our city recorder.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And next?
Move for a continuance of resolution 21-112 to be brought back with 21-43.
Second.
Properly before us. Any further comments? Hearing none. To our city recorder.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have another public hearing. This is on application SA-42020 filed by UDOT. Final plat approval for the Hunter Cove Mountain View Corridor subdivision at 5920 West, 4165 South. And if my computer will respond here. If I can. For some reason, it stopped, so I can't see anything on my computer. It'll come up in a little while, I think. Anything else that we ought to add there on this? This is a fairly routine thing, I believe, and so there's not too much question on it. And my computer is still stuck. With that, then, well, that's enough of an introduction. We'll see if anyone here is here to speak on it. We'll open the public hearing portion of this. Is there anyone here to speak to this application? And Nicole, is there anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll close the public hearing portion of this project. And just to give a little more clarity, this is over by Hunter High School. And just to give a little more clarity, this is over by Hunter High School and was involved in many of the changes that took place there with the Mountain View Corridor. So finally, my computer came up. So there were some changes on some of the excess property there, and this is kind of cleaning all that up. With that then, council, I did close the public hearing, okay.
Move for approval of ordinance 21-45.
Second.
All right. Properly before us, any further comments? Hearing none, to our city recorder.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Next, we have our third public hearing. Just make sure I'm back because in the right place here is application SA-42021 filed by Winco Foods for property at 2616 South, 5600 West. And with this particular issue, they are taking some of that property and they're dividing that for future expansion of different retail stores on that particular site. With that introduction then, lest the council wants to add anything, we'll open the public comment period. Is there anyone here to speak to this? No one raising their hand. Nicole, how about online?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing no public comment, then we will close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for consideration, ordinance 21-46.
I've moved for approval of resolution 21-46.
Ordinance.
Pardon?
Ordinance.
Oh, ordinance, sorry.
Second.
Okay, it's property before us. Hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Mr. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Hune?
Aye.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Ms. Ling?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Next, fun part of our agenda, it's a resolution 21-113 to ratify the city manager's appointment of Dan Johnson as the Public Works Director. And so this is action that has to be taken by the council. Certain positions within the city are set out in state statute to make sure that the council ratifies those. And with that then, to our council.
I move forward with resolution 21-113.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye. With that, that resolution did pass, and so we're going to pause here, as is our tradition, to actually take the official part of this and have him take his oath of office and have him officially in the position.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And the Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
That I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
One of the people in the audience must have been Mrs. Johnson, because her phone popped up as soon as he stood up.
Now, yeah, he can go back down. Just a few minutes. Please do not take more than 30 minutes.
Tell us who's here with you and.
Of this, I can assure you, I will not take more than 30 minutes or three minutes. My wife, Cindy, is right here with me, and I'm grateful that she's here to support me. And I think my kids are at home watching online, but I can't guarantee that they've stayed through the important business of the meeting that's already transpired. But we've also got Hillary Venable from our department and Kobe Wilson, our city engineer. And that's my fan club today. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to accept this new role and responsibility, and I've been, I've worked for a long time under a really good man who we've, we're going to miss, and Mr. Willardson was a great Public Works Director, and I'm grateful for the opportunity, and I look forward to addressing the various challenges as they arise throughout the coming days. So thank you. Thank you for your confidence and your yay votes.
We're sure you'll have lots of opportunities to address various issues, that's for sure. Thank you. With that then, next on our agenda are the consent items on the agenda. These are resolutions 21-115 through 21-123, and the first seven of those.
Through G. Sorry, Mayor, I thought you were looking over here at me.
No, I was just making sure, I was counting how many.
All but the last.
Consent agenda items, we do as a whole because they are so routine. For example, these first two, four, six, seven items there are in conjunction with the 4700 South Road Project, where they'll be doing some major renovation on 4700 South. And so in conjunction with that, there are some things that need to be done as far as rights of way, as far as temporary construction easements to be able to go onto people's property. These happen all the time with all these projects. There's not much feedback on them, hardly anyone comments on them, and in fact, we don't usually discuss them much, unless there's something unusual. So those first seven items are that. The last two are on Stanton Drive, and those must be with the drain project that we're doing, so, that's going to drain work that's being put in there, some new piping. So that's the items on our consent agenda. With that introduction then to the council.
Mayor, move for approval of the nine items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly before us, hearing no further comments, seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilwoman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, that concludes the items on our agenda, because we will not be having a closed session. There's not a need for that tonight. So that concludes it. Any final comments from the council or Mr. Pyle? Then we'll see you all next week.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Without objection, we will stand adjourned. Hearing none.